Good evening and welcome, and we'll call this meeting back into order. We were in a closed session earlier and welcome you to the July regular meeting of the School Board for the District of Amory. And we'll get things started with our consent agenda items.
I had those, so I make a motion to accept those.
Is there a second?
Second.
So the only discussion is, I see that we did make the amendment on the previously approved.
Yes. The personnel was approved in May, but the chart...
It didn't make it out in the minutes.
Yes, just didn't make it into the minutes. However, I will mention that Amory Free Press did pick up all of the information from the website and did a nice article, actually of all of the May and June items.
Right. I went back and looked at the minutes and I'm like, "Oh." Should've done it ahead of time. All right, so any other discussion? All those in favor? I opposed. Any community comments here tonight? Okay, we'll move on to our administrative reports, I believe. Is that where we are? Yeah.
Okay, as administrative report, I have a short presentation that Dina will put up a PowerPoint. Just wanted to talk a little bit about where we're at with our referendum expenditures at this point in mid-July. And we did start our new fiscal year July 1st. So, as you remember, we talked about through our referendum presentations how the money would be used for this operational referendum in the four different areas: staff, technology, maintenance and security, and curriculum and resources. And this is how it was divided out. And we had a breakdown of how the money would be used, again, maintenance and security for the four different buildings. And these were just part of our feasibility study. And then the other three areas: technology, instructional resources, and staff. And I will get to the specifics now of where we're at at this point. And so this is where we're at as of mid-July. We have, as you can see...
That's got a lot... It's picking up fine.
Is it picking up?
Yeah, it really is.
So instructional resources, we have replaced all the interactive classroom displays in all of the buildings. We've increased the classroom budgets in 75 preschool through eighth grade classrooms. We've increased the yearly instructional curriculum materials budget and upgraded the middle school math curriculum, which would not have been done had we not had the additional money. Other additional staff that have been hired include all of these areas listed: high school and intermediate school shared position art, middle and high school alternative ed. Social studies went to full-time position, or no, that was a social studies position hired and transferred to FIAD for additional classes. English language arts went to full-time from a little bit over halftime. We have additional technology education classes in the middle school. Hired a library media specialist who will also do technology integration. High school being students is restored from previously, and the new grounds and maintenance position. Those are all staff positions. Technology, we've replaced all of the high school computers, so all students in the high school will have one-to-one computers, new computers this year. All middle school students for the first time will also have a one-to-one computer, new devices that are actually a laptop combination tablet. And we've upgraded the district wireless, added network security, replaced staff computers and devices, and repurposed the older computers for the intermediate and elementary school with the plan being that next year we'll have new devices for them. Maintenance and security items including a significant overhaul and remodel of the family consumer science lab and kitchen area and classroom, which will be completed in August for school. The bleachers that will be replaced sometime during this year, we're trying to coordinate and implement that with all the activities going on at school. During the school year, that's the plan. And also additional lighting that will be added to the track and field area. And we are hosting a sectional meet, so it'll be nice to have that done. Any questions on the referendum update?
This is on the website?
This can be placed up.
It is on the website, yeah.
And we can put this in the district newsletter and...
Well, we were talking about sending it home in family folders and being weird.
Right, I just want to be able to get it to people that don't have kids in school.
Right. I think we were hoping maybe we could send it home this way.
Perfect.
Until October, November.
Yep, no, I think both of those are good. And we had talked about this, this really is...
You can sit back.
Well, and I have an outside voice all the time, anyway. We talked earlier about getting...
Something in the paper.
Well, about having an article in the paper about the schools and more than just, you know, the big stuff, but the small things that we do too on a semi-quarterly basis or whatever, and I think that would be good of buying our...
I have talked with Amory Free Press are very interested in doing that.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll like that. But I'd like to see that.
They asked me about doing something.
This would be the first good, good thing to use that for.
Yep, absolutely. So, any questions? Thank you.
Okay. All right, move on to... Tracy?
Yep.
Can we turn that mean thing down? Please? It's just a little bit... I'm trying to talk as far away as I can. This is about the best way to look at it.
Yeah. Use mine more.
Okay, I'm here tonight to do... Do you want me to start or wait for you guys to stop turning buttons?
Just keep going.
Okay. To talk about community education in review the past school year, 1617, our summary. And before I start, just want to remind you that the purpose of community education is to ensure extended use of our school facilities, our school and our public facilities beyond the traditional school day, to serve all ages, to serve all demographics within the Amory community as well as beyond, and also to reach out to our own students and staff. And then a final goal of community education is to form partnerships to bring together school and community, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. So I'll start by... Actually, go back, Dina. There we go. I'll start by just kind of going through here and just lots of numbers, just so you can kind of see where we are, and then I'll break some of these things down a little bit. So as far as just offerings, through community education in the last year, there were 136 total offerings. 121 of those were sort of education or enrichment classes, workshops, camps, things like that for all ages. Six separate recreation-type opportunities, four different trips, and five separate kind of community events. Registrations for classes, events, and trips for those 136. So these are official registrations, people who actually signed up for things. 1,658 registrations were taken since last mid-August. And then in addition to that 1,600 registrations, if I add up audience members for our events in the auditorium and the different things we did, easily an additional 1,660 or more attending events. And then we have open gym, recreation, people don't sign up for those, but we try to track and get an average number of how many people show up for those open gym opportunities, and easily over 300 people, which totals well over 3,000 people taking part in community education offerings within the last year. We also host a community rec fair twice a year, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in a moment. And for each of those, we had 17 participants, in other words, 17 organizations that came in, whether it was booster basketball, or youth football, or the bowling alley, anyone who offers opportunities for our youth come in to showcase what they have and try to do some recruiting and share their information. Over the course of the past year, it worked with 53 adult instructors or leaders, supervisors, some of them actually teach classes, some are just there to supervise and oversee and lead workshops or whatever it may be. And building use hours, since the number one goal of community education, or one of the top goals of community education, is to extend the use of our school and public facilities, it's always good to add up those building use hours. And since September 1st, well over 710 hours outside of the school day committed to community education programming. Now you can slide to the next one. So I won't read through all of this, but I just wanted to break it down a little bit so you could see what those numbers mean. For the 121 education enrichment classes, like I said, all ages, all demographics, everything from art to essential oils, longbow making, robotics, self-defense, mushroom classes, real variety, variety of things for youth as well as adults. The recreation opportunities, those things that people don't sign up for, but we make sure that we open our facilities to them. For years, we've been doing the weekend rec basketball, Sunday afternoons, open gym, November through March. Rumble Jumble Open Gym is when we open the intermediate school gym on Tuesday mornings when it's unoccupied during the school day, and we allow families to come in with their preschoolers and their toddlers and let them run for an hour during the winter months. Men's Basketball League has been going forever. We have, I think, six or seven teams this year come in on Wednesday nights, use the middle school gym. Pickleball has started slow, but we're going to keep doing it and keep trying to grow pickleball and see if people come in on Wednesday nights, make sure the gym is theirs, and they can come in and set up nets and play. Futsal was an open gym on some Sunday afternoons in the winter for those soccer players. And then Power Up Open Gym, we've been working with Power Up, which is affiliated with Amory Hospital and Clinic, and they are a great resource, provide great opportunities. And so we're kind of the facility, and we work together so that we can have open gyms for families, and then they come in and they supervise, they sometimes plan games and host activities, so it's nice to have them to work with for some of those open gym opportunities in addition to what we were already doing. Four trips this year, and they all were big. I took two trips to the Orpheum with full 50-plus seat motor coach buses. We went to see Mamma Mia, and then we went to see Wicked. The tickets for Mamma Mia and Wicked, all 100-plus of those tickets sold out within about four weeks of advertising those trips. They were a huge hit. Another trip that I had planned that was, turned out to be quite the experience, I hope I'm able to do it again. We had a group of people who wanted to see US Bank Stadium, the new stadium, and they were giving tours. We knew we needed somewhere to eat lunch, and we needed something else to fill up our day, because if we were going to jump on a motor coach and go into Minneapolis, we were going to fill the day. So we went to the Mill City Museum, which is in downtown Minneapolis, and it was incredible. We started our day at the Mill City Museum, we had a tour, we walked around. I didn't... I learned a lot. I need to... I didn't know flour was explosive. That's my new...
Flour dust, yeah.
Flour dust, okay, not flour. And then we went to the Spaghetti Factory, and then we had a tour of the US Bank Stadium. And it was a really neat day, one of the best trips I think we've ever done. And then in last September, I did a partner trip with Unity Community Education, and we took a group to Warrens, Wisconsin, to the Cranberry Festival, which is basically a massive arts and crafts fair, miles of arts and crafts booths. But people like that, they want to go to these things, but they don't want to drive. So get on a motor coach, relax, take a nap, whatever, get dropped off, picked up at the front doors. So it was a great year for the four trips that we did host. And then some other things that we did, Church of Felons was a documentary that was filmed in Polk County about addiction and redemption. And I had actually talked to them last summer, they hadn't done their first screening yet. They did a screening, I think, in, must have been August in Osceola. And then they did another small one in St. Croix Falls, and then they came to us and said, people have been begging, they said, "We need to get this in Amory. Can you help?" So we worked together, and we had the Church of Felons in Amory. They did two screenings on a Friday, Saturday night in January. Great crowds, I think, it was easily over 600 between the two nights. Three for sure felons were here for each of the screenings for Q and As afterwards, and it was very powerful. And since then, they've started reaching out to more and more schools, and they've really kind of used ours as a model for how they're going to make that happen. So that was good. Festival Theater in St. Croix Falls, if you're familiar with Festival Theater, it's probably been almost two years now, they've been remodeling their space, their performance space. They don't have anywhere to perform, but they still have a theater company while they're working on it, so they've started reaching out. And they came to me and said, "Can we bring our show to Amory?" And it kind of increases their crowd, more interest. So they did Alora Ingalls Wilder Christmas last December. They did a daytime performance matinee for students, and then they did an evening public performance, and then I think they are coming back this December as well. So that was a great experience that we were able to utilize our facility, our beautiful auditorium, for something outside of the Amory area. And then the last two things that I have listed under the events, just the youth rec fair, that we've started doing that, we're probably in our fourth or fifth year. And that was in response to people wanting to know, signing their kids up for softball before they knew that they actually could play baseball, or "I missed hockey sign up," or "I missed this, how do I find out what's happening?" So we came together and said, you know, "We can do some things through family folders, but it's limited." So we started the youth rec fair. And we usually piggyback off a basketball game in the winter, a volleyball game in the fall. We fill the cafeteria with booths and tables, and people hand out their information, just to make sure that the people in our community know what's available to their kids and when those registrations will be. And some people take registrations right there, and that's been very successful. So we'll continue to do that. And then the last thing is just a list of partners. It's important with community education, if you're going to build that relationship between school and community, we have to have partnerships. And some of these are partner, as in I actually work with them, we co-host classes like the DNR, WITC, the Family Resource Center, St. Croix Valley. Some of these others, I just do a lot of promotion for. They're great opportunities within our community. I don't want to repeat or duplicate their services, but I want to make sure that people know what's out there. So I promote, if it's a private business, they actually can put an ad, a paid ad, in the community ed fire. Otherwise, it's a lot of promotion. Like Kinship will contact me and want to get their information in the community ed fire. So a long list of partners. It was a good year. I would say my highlights from this past year, Church of Felons was definitely a highlight just because it was different, it was interesting, and anytime you get that great response, public response, it's powerful. Probably my favorite class, and if anyone's interested in woodworking, you need to check this out this winter because we're doing it again. Community member Perry Anderson makes primitive longbows, and basically he shows up on the first day of class with an entire log for every student. And I think nine weeks later, they all have a functional, beautiful, longbow that they can hunt with, that they can... And it's just really amazing to watch. By night two, that log is down, you can recognize it as a bow for hunting. So we're going to do that again this fall. So it's been good. So do you have any questions?
Keep at it.
Yeah, great job. It is... It's just, it's a jewel in our ground, our community ed. When I see, you can see them in some of the other papers, and just, you know, in other things, and we meet with other board members, there's nobody that even holds a candle to our community ed. I mean, they're just not even close.
If I could just add also, Tracy Henderson's role has expanded beyond community ed, also to be sort of the communications guru of the district, and our website and the work that she does through social media is recognized throughout the state. So I commend her for a great job.
Thank you.
Yep, we're lucky to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thanks, Tracy.
Okay, now we can move on to our informational items. Insurance.
If you remember last month, I brought to you our insurance renewal, and there was a new policy and kind of an up, and Darren had asked if I could research a little bit more on making our coverage different than what I had proposed. So you'll see, Mr. Leadholm got back to me to let me know that there would be other coverage levels available. And so for additional, and we call it cyber and data compromise, and if you remember, we've had data compromise policy for maybe a couple of years now. Cyber is kind of new, but in tandem and kind of makes your package complete. And so you'll see there that there's additional amounts for different amounts of coverage. I had originally come to you with $100,000, and you had asked what would it be to go a little higher for instances or incidences. So you'll see the $250,000 would be an additional $675. If we wanted $500,000, it'd be additional $1,423 from what I had told you last month. So it's available, and...
Did he give a recommendation? I know they were looking at the $100,000, but I also think sometimes people do that because we're a school and we don't have a lot of money, so they try to find the cheapest way to do things.
To be honest, it's fairly new, and so the theory of having something is better than nothing, and it's new. Most of the districts are starting with the $100,000. It's kind of the data compromise. We started with $50,000 to have some kind of coverage. So being on the new side, most districts are going with $100,000 at this point. We do go out for bid. Next year is an actual bid renewal, and so next year we could actually go out for bid for some of those other coverages. So at this time, I recommend $100,000, and possibly next year when we go to bid and maybe have other companies, we could go with a different amount.
Well, this is not an action item, so we can't vote on that tonight. So, but I would, I'd feel better at $250,000 just personally. I just know how much money... If we have a data... My biggest concern is that we have a student, a data breach of student data or student personal information, and that to me, $100,000 would be, that'd just be a lawyer fee, not the penalty of data breach with, you know, with sensitive... If we had a special ed kid or whatever whose information got out on the internet, I just, I don't think $100,000 is even...
There are other parts of our policy, the umbrella and some other parts of it that would maybe cover parts too. The linebacker part of our policy, and again, depending on the incident, it would maybe overlap with some of our other coverages.
If we had a data breach of our insurance information or any health information that we had, that's just, $100,000 is nothing in a court if we're sued.
True.
Well, I know they're rare, but that's why you have insurance.
Would you like it brought back as an action item?
I don't know what everybody else thinks.
So the difference is what, going from $256 to $675 for an extra $150,000 in coverage, right? So we're talking $400, $425 bucks.
Now, is that annually or is that...
Yes, it's an annual.
It's an additional $675.
On top of what I had mentioned.
Yeah, so it's an additional $675.
An additional $675, okay, all right. So $675 for an extra $150,000 in coverage.
Right, because we would have 100...
Yes, yep.
Our policies renewed July 1, and I have on my schedule to call Mr. Leadholm tomorrow morning because EMC can just rewrite our policy if we wait longer.
But we can't make a decision till...
Till next month.
Okay.
That's the problem.
So I guess, yes, bring it back next month.
Yeah, and I'd like to have all three of those as an action item, and then we can decide where we want to go from there. That's, if everybody's concerned on that.
Yeah, the action was taken last month, and we...
To accept the policy.
To accept the policy.
But we wanted that caveat on there.
We brought it back as an information.
Yeah, it should have been back as an action item. So can you bring that back to add on that insurance in a month?
We can, yep.
We'll do that next.
We can add it on.
It can be added. We'll find out if it can be added on, and so we're...
I'm guessing if we want to spend more money, they'll find a way to make it happen?
True.
I can't believe... No, I'm sorry, this is all you're going to get, you know? I can't believe it.
Without taking action, you could direct to be what you want done, and you can bring it for...
We can't, that's really certain the agenda, I think. I mean, if we can't do it, we can't do it, but that's what I recommend. We bring it back next month if everybody's good on that.
I'm okay with that. If we find that you can't, if you can get us the information, and we can, if we have to, you know, do a forum, get it together to do...
Yeah, but we can't because it's already passed July 1st is what they're saying.
And they were saying if it was as quick as I could let them know tomorrow, the policy could just be read.
Yeah, we just... Hence the bureaucracy of government.
Let me talk to Leadholm Insurance tomorrow, and we'll see what he recommends or what we could do. I don't know how written in stone that date was.
Okay.
And in the end, we may decide that it's, we do it originally anyway, but we really can't have that discussion or move on that at all until we at least have it as an action item. So we can discuss it, but we can't finally put you on that. Okay, anything else on that? Great. All right, looks like we've got Kinship.
No.
No? Oh, first, I'm sorry, back to you, Twilight.
I will be...
I won't mess up this one for you, okay?
I'll make this quick.
I won't mess this one up for you.
Department of Public Instruction is required to give us an estimate on July 1 of what they're predicting our general aid or equalization aid to be. So I have that. It is up, we would receive with their estimate based on it, we would receive $252,000 more in state aid than we did last year. It's $207,000 more than what I've been predicting in the Baird model. So it's close, it's an estimate still, you know, they don't have crystal walls either.
Well, they don't have a budget.
That'd be the biggest problem.
Yes, that too. But that's the estimate they were giving us. So it's fairly close. Their estimates are usually pretty close, but my Baird estimate was just about as close to, so that's what I know on the estimate.
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay. Next, we have Kinship.
Lisa and Amy are here with Kinship of Polk County.
So my name is Lisa Thannig, and I am the director for Kinship of Polk County, and this is Amy Danielson. She is the coordinator for the Amory School District as well as Clear Lake and the Clayton areas. I want to thank you for letting us be here today and take time out of your night from the sweltering heat, I guess. I'm just going to give you a brief history. I really don't know what you do or don't know about Kinship, but I don't want to keep you too long. So I'm just going to start with letting you know that Kinship's been serving Polk County since 1980. We started as a community-based program where we were matching adults with children who needed additional support and guidance. And then in 1998, as a way to reach out to more of the community and reach more, out to more families and children, we decided to start partnering with the school districts in Polk County to create a school mentoring program. So we do both the community-based still, and then we do school-based mentoring in all eight of the school districts in Polk County. We match, in the school-based program, we match high school students with elementary students who need additional support and guidance. Our mentors, or your high school mentors, have to apply. They need to provide references, and then they go through an interview process. And if they're chosen, then we work towards matching them with students in your district who are referred by teachers or other staff who work closely, guidance counselors who work closely with the students, who they feel need that extra support and guidance. We then make our matches based on preferences of the guardian and the teachers and of the mentor as well. So we try to, for example, a student who maybe is struggling and he really likes football, if we have a student, a high school student who's a football player, then we might match them together so they have something in common. Our school mentors, or our school matches continue throughout the school year. They typically meet once per week for about a half an hour during the school day. Our hope is that we can match them and they can stay together the next school year, and the next school year until the mentor graduates or until the elementary student moves on into intermediate or middle school. We do match intermediate school students here. I know every district is a little bit different, and that's why I have Amy up here to help me with your district since she's so knowledgeable about it. So Amy, in your school, she meets monthly with your mentors to, you know, just make sure the mentors are on track. We focus on core values, and, you know, at the meetings, then mentors can bring up any problems that may have arisen, or they can talk about any of the successes that they've had with the students. Amy also keeps in contact with teachers, counselors, and other key staff in the school. This year, not only in Amory are we doing one-to-one mentoring, but because of the loss of your wrestling coach this year, many of, some of the high school boys were struggling, and so we decided to implement a group mentoring programs. We brought in a high, an adult mentor who mentors for us, who has been coming into the school once per week to meet with these boys who were struggling. once per week to meet with these boys who were struggling with Coach Marco's, the loss of Coach Marco. And it sounds like we'll be continuing that into the next school year as well. So, that's kind of an implemented thing. We don't do that at every school, but, you know, because we work closely with your students, we kind of know what your needs are, and we'll tailor it to whatever we need to. What else did I want to say? So, you know, the impact of school mentoring, we really want to just promote self-esteem, confidence, and respect for self and others to these young children. You know, young people who have mentors, they're more likely to get good grades, make better choices. They're less likely to engage in risky behaviors, including, you know, drug and alcohol use. They're more likely to stay on track to graduate, and even possibly go to college. We conduct surveys at the end of every school year. Teachers, families, and mentors all fill out these surveys, and then we compile that data and take a look at it, and see maybe what changes we need to make, what we're doing well, maybe what we could do a little bit better. I have some handouts, I guess I should have put it up there, but I have some handouts for you with those statistics from this last school year that you can look over. And then, the reason I'm here is our funding. My job as a Director, of course, is to ask for money. We are a nonprofit. We rely heavily on, you know, outside resources for help with financial, with our operating costs. So, we, we have grants and foundations. We have a contract with Polk County. We have a yearly fundraiser. We have corporate sponsorship, a partner campaign, and then we do have school sponsorship. So, each year, we come into the school, and we ask if you would be willing to support us at a $2,000 level. School mentoring, on average, costs about $5,000 per school year to run well and efficiently. And I know in the past, Amory has supported us. In 2014 and in 2015, we received some financial support from you. $500, I believe, in 2014, and then $1,500 in 2015. So, I'm here to ask for $2,000 in support for the upcoming school year. Does anyone have any questions? Want anything?
I don't think so.
That would need to come from you, that request.
Yeah, we'll take that into consideration for our 1718 budget, which just started.
So, the way it works is then Mr. Cookta would bring us that recommendation.
Okay.
And I think that's, I remember doing it in years past, so, yeah.
Okay, good.
It's a great program, though.
Yeah, I know we've got a lot of students involved, and it's an excellent program.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll leave you with some of the statistics, just want to look everything over, so.
How many students did you say we had involved in it, one way or another?
This past school year, there were 35, or between the 2015-16 school year, 35 matches.
There would have been more if we take into account the four high school boys that came in for six to eight weeks.
So, there's really more, like 70 kids, because you have 35 mentors, and, okay.
Correct.
You know, and the interesting thing about that, I've just been going through some surveys, because every year, we go through surveys, and at the end, and that brings up an interesting point, because it really is affecting the high school students, the mentors, as well as the kids. One of the mentors, actually, one of their comments was, "It makes me, makes me realize how important I am, what I'm doing, and it makes me want to be a better person." And that was, it was pretty remarkable when I read that, to see, like, that's the impact on the high school students. I mean, they're your, your good kids anyway. They're gonna be the ones that are your model students, and yet, they're seeing the importance in what their role is doing, and how important they are. And that's invaluable for them.
I'm assuming, maybe you can explain just on my end, because I'm kind of a wonky that way. On the, on the adult end, when you have the adult mentors, what sort of security background checking, is that pretty in-depth, and that you?
Yep, and we go out to their home, and get a tour of their home, and sit down and do a pretty in-depth interview. And if, we go back a second time if we feel like we need to.
And we do, you know, their state and local, and sex offender registry, all that kind of background.
Great.
And then, here, if I wouldn't send my kids with them, I won't send.
That's what's great about us being young, you know, being moms ourselves. If I wouldn't send my own children with someone, then.
That's usually the best judge there is.
Right? I think so. Yeah. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. Moving on, where are we? Legislative update, Mr. Cookta.
Okay, just a couple things I want to mention. First, Senate Bill 195 has been in the news quite a bit, and I just want to give some highlights. It basically is a bill that changes the differentiation between non-recurring and recurring referendums, and limits all future referendums to five years throughout the state. It also, fiscally, what it means is that it would repeal old referendums, I believe, is my understanding.
Anything but in the last 10 years, 15 years?
I thought it was only.
No, no, because it covers both of our referendums.
Yeah, I was just reading.
I think it was 1999, maybe, is when it went back to.
Yeah, the legislation is out there, and so, it's obviously one that's highly concerning to us as a school district, and it removes the school board's authority, which basically takes away local control.
Does more than that, it removes the community's authority.
So, that's something that I speak in opposition to, clearly, and then.
So, there, that has just, if I can add on that, I know it's moved out of committee, but it has not had a floor date set for it yet. But I would recommend that if there's a floor date set, that we get together and pass a, discuss a resolution to oppose that vehemently. I think Mr. Cookta and I have both gotten a hold of, it's coming out of the Assembly, where there's a constant effort by people within the Assembly who, if they can't, their complaint has always been, if they can't win at the ballot box, they'll just pass a law to make the changes that they want to do. So, that's what they're doing. And that, it's just a constant removal of local control, so I'd like to get a resolution on the docket.
Get any footwork?
What I'm hoping is that people in our community and our board members get a hold of Representative Jarko, because again, that's where it's coming out of, is that party and that branch of government. It's not in the Senate yet. However, Senator Harsdorf was even a bit non-committal in the reply that we got back from her, so I'd recommend that you, you all call in and say, you know, express your opinions, because it's ridiculous that the state government continues to think they know more than the people that live here.
Okay, and then the other big item, of course, is our two-year biennial budget, or biennial budget, which, we started our fiscal year July 1, but we don't know what our aid level will be for the coming year. And I guess the best words are budget impasse. It's been at an impasse, although, reading an article today, the Governor proposed some sort of a compromise that I was just reading about, that may help to move. Apparently, they've got the numbers worked out for K-12 education, but transportation, how they're going to fund that is the big issue. And those are the two big ticket items that all the discussions behind closed doors are revolving around at this point.
Is that it?
Yep.
I have one more legislative update. So, there's another bill that had a hearing on Friday. I think it's Assembly Bill 147, but don't hold the, hold me on the number. And this, this is a bill that has been authored by two Republican representatives in the Assembly that basically would require school boards to go to competitive bidding, and to force the boards to pick the lowest bid in a construction project, or in a larger project. And people go, well, that's all right, you always want to get the lowest bid, but that's not really true. Other municipalities aren't held to that same standard, because they have the opportunity to have their local control to decide, well, maybe it's not apples to apples, maybe it's, maybe it would be, if it's a one penny difference, you'd be forced to take the cheapest one, when the one penny more expensive would be all local contractors. You know, so, but it removes the local control of the school board to be able to have that deliberation, and to be able to make those decisions about what bid to accept. I don't think we have a problem with competitive bidding. Once you hit certain levels, I think that's, that's a good thing. That helps taxpayers. But again, for the state government to tell school boards, "We're going to tell you which bid you have to take, and you don't have a discussion," is again, just a classic opportunity where the people in Madison are beginning to think more. Some of the people in power are beginning to think they know more than the school boards that are elected. They don't have this war on municipalities, and on city councils, and on county boards. It's all on public school districts, and it's because there's a certain group of people that are starting to get, I think, upset in the government, that they're starting to hear from the population of Wisconsin that, hey, we support public schools. And I don't think they like that. So, they're doing what they can to stop legislatively, that they haven't been able to do by other means. So, I would keep my eye on that one as well.
Also, Tony Evers has come up with a proposal for accountability for voucher schools. Some guidelines there that are just basic ones, that I don't know whether they'll pass or not, but as the state, you know, hands out $7,200 per student for a voucher school, they really have no accountability to those voucher schools for their academic success. And so, Tony Evers, our State Superintendent, is looking towards a bill to try and bring some accountability for that money that's handed out to them.
That's great.
If I could go back to one more item on, it's an informational item, but also under administrative reports, I kind of skipped over. But I just wanted to mention that as part of our maintenance budget, George Sigsworth, our Maintenance Director, and I have, and Ms. Wesley, we've talked about a middle school bathroom upgrade that would be necessary. It would be part of the maintenance budget. And we're taking bids at this time, so we don't want to talk about dollar amounts specifically. But Ms. Wesley is here and available to talk about that also, if there are any questions. But it would basically be, I think, about a 50-50 split with flow-through federal funding dollars. Ms. Wesley?
That's correct. So, our ID program at the.
Take your hand off.
Oh, keep it off.
That's a mute.
All right. Our ID program, used to be the cognitive disabilities program at the middle school, lacks the same facilities that we have in the three other buildings. And a bathroom in close proximity is probably the most important thing that we need. So, that is the purpose. We've talked about making it wheelchair accessible with a changing room at some point in time as well. So, it's really a necessity, and.
So, when we spend that money, does that affect our MOE at all in that, then, for upcoming years?
If it comes out of flow-through, it will not impact the district, so it won't, it won't help your MOE, is what I'm gonna say.
Well, I mean, but it's not gonna increase it for other years, right?
I don't, no, uh-uh. It should not have an impact.
Not with flow-through, though.
Okay.
Right.
Good. Anybody have any other questions about it? Build away. All right, anything else, or on that? Okay. Move to our action items now, finally, student academic standards.
Okay, this was new last year, that the, every school board in the state had to have a annual notice and pass a motion that accepted the core academic standards that would be used for the school year. And so, if we flip ahead, we've got the next-generation science standards, the Common Core state standards. Our programs align with English, Language Arts, and Math for the Common Core, and then the Wisconsin Model Academic Standards for Social Studies, and the Wisconsin Model Academic Standards, well, the science I already mentioned, and then also for Technology Education, all the CTE, Vocational Health, FIAD, Art, Music. So, we ask for the board to pass the motion to accept these academic standards again for this year.
Okay, can I get a motion for that?
I'll make the motion to approve those standards.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
Just on that, SDA stands for School District of Amory. We use so many acronyms sometimes, that it's kind of like, you know, really, it'd be nice to have it on there, so. Because everybody's, maybe the audience is like, "SDA, what is that?"
Do we pay by the word when we have to post them, or by the letter?
I don't know.
There you go.
We can spell it.
Because those, I'm sure, that's one of the things we have to post, then, a class-whatever notice on that, too, don't we, eventually?
Yes.
That's one of the. Yep, so, okay, so, is there any other discussion? Let's do noted, though, for future reference. Great. All right, all who's in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay, that passed. Athletic logo, I'm guessing it's Mrs. Hendrickson?
This is fun. I looked at all of this. This was fun.
So, hopefully, I don't mess this up. All right, so just stay right there, Dea. Don't move the screen. This is.
Oh, sure.
Oh, actually, no, that's not true. You have to get down to the, this part is, why do we want an athletic logo? All right, so, in, in 1996, when, as a school district, we had decided that we needed to move away from the Native American logo, the headdress, all those things that we were using, we, we did a school logo contest, and a hand-drawn logo was accepted. It was our Warrior Shield that we've been using since 1996, so for 21 years, we've had the Warrior Shield. And we've had great luck with it. It's beautifully reproduced online, on paper. It was drawn by an Amory High School graduate, and, and it's good, and we don't want it to go anywhere. But, over the process of the last 21 years, what's happened is our Amory Warrior Shield, and I guess you can see kind of a blurry version of it there. There are a lot of edges. There is a lot of detail. If you really want it to look nice, you have to use at least three colors. And that works fine in some formats. But what we've run into over the years is, it's difficult and expensive to reproduce on uniforms, apparel. There's just so much going on. So, it's, what's kind of happened, we have coaches, booster groups, people who are, who are leaders of school-related groups, youth groups, whatever it might be, who've decided that it's too hard to work with that shield, so they've kind of created their own. And if you really start looking around at Amory Apparel, and I don't know how much you pay attention to this stuff, but there are a number of different logos out there. There is an AW logo that some groups use that represent us, but they've never been approved. People just sort of create them, and like them, and reinvent them, and, and it's kind of got to the point where, between the athletic department, me as communications, I know with Mr. Dirk, for the high school, with Mr. Cookta, we all were a part of, and we kind of got together and said, you know, what are we gonna do here? We have people using this logo that nobody's approved, as well as some other logos. We've got our shield. We don't want the shield to go anywhere. So, anyway, first, let me, let me just read this, "Why do we want an athletic logo?", and then we'll kind of take it from there. So, this is part of a flyer that went out in the school district newsletter in January, as a result of a couple different meetings. And then it also went home in all-family folders, and, I don't remember, but I'm pretty sure we put this in the newspaper. I can't remember anymore. Anyway, but it did go home in 7,000 district newsletters. So, why do we want an athletic logo? "As a district, we display our school shield proudly on printed materials and online. But our shield is difficult to display and expensive to reproduce on athletic uniforms and sports apparel. We are not planning to eliminate the shield. It will still remain as our school district logo, similar to the way UW-Madison uses a university logo and an athletic logo. We want a single logo for Amory Warrior Athletics, and are asking for public input. Submit creative logos that are simple, yet bold, unique and timeless, easily transferable to apparel, and of course, primarily red and white. While we encourage you to use some variation of an A or W, or both together, we certainly welcome other suggestions. The logo that we select will be used for all Amory School District athletic teams." So, there was, I think this idea first came up at, it was a marketing meeting. I think you were there, and we had talked about, it was probably three years ago. We had talked about the idea of hanging onto our shield and doing something else for athletics, so that we could easily utilize something on uniforms. And then it was discussed, we had a meeting this, I think it was this winter, I didn't write the dates down. And there were some administrators there, athletic department, coach, representatives, coaches, and lots of different people were invited, and we kind of talked about heading into this contest and putting this out there to see what we could get, if we could come up with something that we could use, use for, to represent athletics, to accompany our shield, not to replace our shield. So, in March, we had received 38 different logos. Some kind of utilizing, playing with the NW, some that were, that use lots of graphics, some that use helmets, and Spartan things, and Warrior things, and it's kind of all over the place. And as a committee, we had kind of found a couple that we liked. We liked the idea that was there. And then we grabbed those, and then we went back to the people who'd submitted those to trying to get to the next step. And we went through that, narrowed that down even more to one that we, that we liked the most, that we thought was simple, and, and served, served our purpose, met our goals, and that's what we have, what we have tonight. So, Dea, you can show, show where we landed here. So, Dea, you can show, show where we landed here. So, on the left is our logo, continuing to represent the School District of Amory. That was our 1996, that we want to continue to use. And on the right is the proposed additional logo to be used for School District of Amory Athletics. The initial concept for the combination of the AW was, was from Sally Clevegard, but she was not the graphic artist who we worked with when we got to the next step. We actually worked with an Amory High School graduate who specializes in logos, so we worked with her to get to this AW. We had some other options, we did some different things with graphics and things on it that looked really sharp when it stood alone, but when we put it next to our shield, it was too much, and then it no longer served our purpose. So, then, we went back to, it needs to be simple, it needs to be bold, it needs to be something that will look identifiable and nice on a football helmet, on a softball, baseball batting helmet, or on a uniform somewhere where it can stand alone, standalone. What else? I think that's it. So, Dea, you can jump to the next one. So, then, what we have, and you'll want to scroll down, so, we have approved colors, approved version of the red, and then black and white, but what we do is, we have, we have brand guidelines. If the logo, if we have a one-color option, so it's the left column here, if it's just the logo and you're printing it on white, if it's just the logo when you're printing it on red, and on the bottom, if it's just the logo and you're printing it on dark gray or black. And then, the right column is if you have the two-color option, and you want to outline it in black. What would it look like on white? What would it look like on red? What would it look like on black? And then, if you scroll down farther, we went to the next step. Obviously, AW, if people don't recognize it, doesn't identify who we are. So, the goal would always be able to have Amory or Amory Warriors with it somewhere. So, we have a selected font that we put with it, and once again, how it would look like is a one-color option or a two-color option, and on the three different colors. And then, the third one, Dea, you can keep going, sometimes, Amory Warriors is just too many letters. So, just to say, "Amory," and what it would look like for our brand guidelines, if we wanted to print with different colors. And then, these brand guidelines would be submitted to those who are doing any type of printing apparel, to stick to what we've created, rather than creating their own, if it's getting printed, to follow our guidelines and use it the way we want it to be used, so that we can try to be more concise and pull that together, and so that logo identifies us, rather than lots of different logos that are out there. So, do you have questions on this before we move on, or?
I like it. So, are we changing our colors to red, white, and black?
No.
Because our official colors are red.
I knew you were going to ask that, Darren.
You know I did.
So, the only reason that we did the two-color option is because sometimes, you're going to want that black outline, that black accent, so that's why we did it with both, for those who have the option of the two color. I like it just as the red and white, and I think that's how we would use it were a decal or anything, but sometimes, that black outline is just going to make it pop. Like, if you go back, well, it would be the other, where I had the shield next to the AW, I, the shield has three colors in it, and if I put just the red AW next to it, it just kind of disappeared on the paper. But if I put this one with the black outline, the A pops, and it pops off the page. So, we want it as an option, but sometimes, you print with one color. As far as the bottom, so then, go back to the other one, Dea, to the bottom, with it being on the black, the reason we did that is because sometimes, people will print it on black, or dark gray, or any type of dark color, and we want to be able to control what that looks like if they're putting it on black. We have no intention, the athletic department has no intention of any black uniforms, of any primarily black colors, but we need to have it there, so when someone shows up, whether it's, might be boys' booster basketball, and they say, "We're going to order shirts," and everybody wants black t-shirts, well, it's booster, we're not going to control, they're not uniforms, and they want to use the Amory Warrior logo, then, that's what it needs to look like on the black. That's how we want you to do it. So, that's why that's there, just to try to control the use of the image. Not to promote the use of black, but we have to have it there, so. So, you notice there aren't any black AWs, though? We didn't do that. But we had to show it on black and dark gray.
I don't disagree enough to be against it, I just don't agree. Tell it to Bucky. Bucky is always red and white. But that's okay.
Right. And I like the red and white, we just want the option of the black.
Whatever, I'm being a stinker more than anything. The other question is, a couple of questions, then. Are we going to trademark that, so that we have control who uses it?
We could, but I don't know what it takes to do that.
That might be something we want to explore. One of the things that I've noticed, huh? Yeah, one of the things I've noticed, people pull this up, if you type "Amory Warriors" on Google, you'll pop up, and there's places all over the world that have our, or, you know what I mean? It'd be just nice to know who's using it and giving people permission to use it, as opposed to, not that a trademark won't stop somebody from doing it, but it will at least allow us a little bit more control over who has our logo and who doesn't. Sometimes, I know over the years, we've had fundraiser groups come in from, you know, wherever, Guatemala, and selling stuff that had our logo on it, and I'm like, "Yeah, it's not really good that we don't have control over who's using that."
And I don't know how many schools actually do trademark theirs, and I don't know anything about the process or what that takes. I think in the beginning, to try to maintain that control, if we move ahead with this, we just need to make sure these brand guidelines go to all of our staff members and anyone local who prints, and the best we can do is say, "If you're printing anything for Amory Athletics, this is what you print, and these are your red guidelines."
And I can tell you, kind of being in that business a little bit for a few years, that there are many organizations, educationally, you know, whether, we've printed for colleges and whatnot, that we don't print unless it's approved through a communications office, and I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing, that any, obviously, we as a district can't control what booster groups do, unless they do our logo, but we can't control that. But within the district, if you're the hockey, and you want to make new helmets, to make sure that the communications, or, I would say, that's the best place, because you own the logo, approves that it's in the right spot and on a tasteful thing and whatnot. That's not a board policy, but it's just a, maybe an administrative procedure that we look at down the road. Not that I want to over-regulate, and I just think we really want to be protective, that we're an educational institution and that we have control over our, there's been a lot of work put into that.
Right. And one other thing, too, I didn't mention before, this, and this won't necessarily, we aren't going to start ordering uniforms and, you know, blast this AW right in the middle of everything. Some uniforms are best just to say, "Amory" across the front, and maybe this would be something on a sleeve or somewhere else on it. Some, that could be the front, depends on the uniform, depends on the sport, so this isn't necessarily going to be on everything, but if someone wants to use an athletic logo, we want them to use this one.
I just think we have somebody that owns our logo and our branding, and that person who is you should have some sort of authority about when it gets used and how it gets used, just, and only the authority is to make sure that you know how it's being used, so all of a sudden, it shows up somewhere, and you go, "How did that get there?"
Right.
You know what I mean? I just think that's a good administrative procedure, possibly, to look at down the road. That's, I don't think, a board action or anything, but...
And difficult to control in our world of, online world we live in, but we do what we can, yes.
Absolutely. You just do what you can.
Yes.
That's my opinion. Anybody else have anything on that?
In the past, haven't we given the district administrators some authority on certain things that the board didn't want to have to deal with?
Well, yeah, this was, yeah, they just, but it has to be written down as a procedure.
And we have it in writing now, we have the guidelines, and I appreciate, again, Tracy doing all the work, leading this along with Josh Gould. So, now that we have the guidelines, the brand information, we are really branding the school district, which we want to, and so, we'll get the information out to staff, out to parents in the community, best we can.
Yep.
Right, and the goal is to let her have that type, we keep using our shield.
Absolutely. No, it's a great idea. It's cool, that's why I said it was fun, because I looked at it when we got our board and stuff, and I'm like, "Yeah, that's kind of neat."
Okay. So, do we have to ask for approval?
Yeah, you do.
Okay.
We need to stamp that one. So, can I get a motion to accept that as our, as the official athletic logo for the school district?
Chelsea.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Chelsea. Any discussion on that? Thanks to you and the whole team, I know there was a lot of people that were involved in that, so you all did a great job. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, there we go. It's done. All right. Next personnel action, which we will take up in closed session and come back to approve or not approve contracts that are there, and whatever else we have, but it will be a contract approval. And so, we will go into closed session to consider employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility in order to take personal action pursuant